So, let's get going. So, good evening. My name is Jeff Waters. I've been asked by the PTO to be the moderator for their two forums. We had one last Tuesday morning. This is the evening session, and I want to welcome you and candidates, and thank everybody for coming, and thank the candidates for putting themselves out there because that's not easy. So, we have some questions prepared, and we are going to go through them. Just a couple reminders. So, there are six candidates running for the traditional, the three, three-year positions that come up for every board meeting. These are five of those six candidates. I guess Roger could not be here tonight. And then Cory Haas is running unopposed for a one-year term, which came about because of a board member, Michael Kane, whose family moved to North Carolina. So, and she was here last Tuesday but couldn't, had told us she couldn't be here this evening. So, just to give you the lay of the land of who everybody is. I'm going to go into the questions here in a second and just say that as a lifelong end-of-the alphabet guy, I feel like people at the end of the alphabet always get, you know, the short end of the stick. So, I used a random number generator on the computer to decide who would go first for each question, and I've already told everybody that. And Vicki is going to be the person to ask, to answer first, the first question, and then we'll just go around the table the regular way. Oh, I'm sorry. So, the format also is each of the candidates has 90 seconds to give an opening statement. Then we'll go into the Q and A. They have 90 seconds to give their answer to the question, and then everybody has additional 60 seconds to comment further if they so choose. And then we'll wrap up with closing statements. And we'll take a five or 10-minute break in the middle here. So, that said, why don't we start with the opening statements? And I think for that, we can go the normal way and start with Oyin.
Thanks once again to the PTOC for hosting this forum, and thank you all for coming. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Oyin Owolabi, and I'm excited to be running for the Melbourne Board of Education. I'm passionate about education, and as a serving member of the Board of Education and as a parent to three young children who attend the Melbourne Public School, I'm energized about the opportunity to continue to serve our children, teachers, and community as a whole. I've lived in Melbourne for more than 10 years and have two children in Wyoming. My oldest son just started middle school after completing the first year of the Washington School. We have a fantastic school system, which I've supported in various capacities, including serving as a representative for the Wyoming School for the Educational Foundation. I'm uniquely positioned for this role, as I am the only candidate who has served on the BOE. I have insight about what it takes, and I know what is needed to be a successful board member and a driver of progressive change. Our community is on the precipice of so many new things, and as a mother of two elementary and one middle school student, and as a current board member, I have a ringside seat at that table. I currently serve on four BOE committees: Personnel, Property, Finance, and Student Liaison for the Middle and High School, and have exposure to the foundation of our system, and recognize our strengths as well as some of the challenges that face us. It takes a special type of a person, and I'm that person. I understand the big picture and offer creative solutions to ensure all of our children are successful. As a clinical researcher, my analytical skills are perfectly aligned to the role of a board member. A key part of my job is risk management, and this correlates with our schools. We need to mitigate risk by anticipating the issues and getting ahead. When a problem arises, it is no longer a risk, and it can have significant impact on our children and the overall welfare of our community. There are three key areas where I believe we need to focus.
I'm sorry, we're going to have to...
Thank you.
Do that in your closing statement. Okay.
Hello. Thank you, everyone, for coming. I am Danielle Prieto, town resident for 14 years and mother to three boys, two of which are now in seventh and ninth grade, and another that graduated Rutgers this past June. After 27 years working on a derivatives trading floor, I retired last March and started to go to BOE meetings and look for ways, given my skill set, on how I can best serve our community. Through the years, I've volunteered for many functions in the system, such as being lunch aid, book fairs, library assistance, art appreciation, class trips, and PTO fundraisers like Oktoberfest. I love teaching, and if I didn't go into finance, I would have been a high school math teacher. During the spring, the township was urging residents to get their substitute teaching certification, as though there was a very big shortage. I am the only candidate who has gotten their substitute teaching certification and has been in all the classrooms and donating the proceeds to the Ed Foundation. I was also encouraged to run for the board, given as my finance skills would be the good use to get the expense, the expense side of the balance sheet down, so we have more money to hire more teachers, and I found quite a few ways that we can do that. To be successful and effective on the BOE, I believe you have to have the time, energy, and commitment. I do now have that time and very large commitment for this role, and the wisdom of having three very different sons, sons who have all flourished in the school system, and I am extremely grateful.
Danielle, sorry, thank you.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank the PTOC for the opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Dave Schlossman. So, I have a son who's in third grade at Glenwood. I've lived in town for 20 years. I have an older daughter who is, graduated from the high school in 2013. She was an honor student. And I have a niece who graduated from the high school in 2015, and she had an IEP. So, I have had children on both ends of the spectrum in high school. I got involved because I volunteered, I've been volunteering in the library at Glenwood for the last three years, which I enjoy very much. It's probably my favorite thing to do. I do that every other week, and I got an opportunity to represent the school and the PTOC Safety Committee, and I got to walk the grounds with Dr. Jason, which was a great experience, and there were some steps that were neglected between the school, which the steps were owned by 806 Morris Turnpike. And basically, by making two calls, I was able to do a good thing, by calling the attorney and our town engineer and following up the status for repair. So, I'd like to have this position so that I could do more good things for the community. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Caroline Updike, and after 10 years of service to the community, I am delighted to be running for the Board of Education. I bring three core beliefs to this process. First, we need to prepare all our kids for a world that is in deep transition. Second, we have to ensure that the safety, wellness, and security of all our students is met. Third, we need a productive partnership between parents and administrators so that we can drive a sense of community. And of course, we have to do all that with fiscal responsibility and demonstrated transparency. To best accomplish these goals, it helps to know the Melbourne School System, and I do well. My husband and I moved to Melbourne in 2008 with our five-year-old twins. This year, they entered their sophomore year, which means we know the system as parents, but also I know it as an active parent leader. I've been an active volunteer since the beginning, and I've held too many roles to enumerate here. Some, but not all, the leadership roles that I held in town include being co-president of the Melbourne Special Education Committee, president of the Heart Turn PTO Board, and president of this very body, the PTO Conference. I can honestly say that I left every job better than I found it. Relative to this process, I would say the job of PTO Conference is the one that best prepared me. I was the chief liaison with our superintendent and our Board of Ed for the parent community. And professionally, I am a CMO for an investment firm in real estate. I'm excited to be here, and I look forward to sharing my views with you today. Thank you.
My name is Vicki Walia, and I am excited to be here today. I am, my first and foremost role in life is that of being mother to my third grader who's here tonight. And in addition to that, I'm very committed to my family and to my community. I am the product of and a strong contributor to public schools. I believe very strongly in the impact and the role that they play in the broader society. I went to public schools in Toronto and then became a teacher and taught in classrooms for a number of years before going on to pursue graduate studies. I got a PhD in industrial and organizational psychology and have been playing leadership roles in Fortune 500 companies for the last 12 years. All of that requires you to be a skilled collaborator, able to work with people across lines, and help move people forward. Obviously, this is a demanding commitment in and of itself, but I recently transitioned jobs to a more job that's more local, and I'm excited about being able to dedicate the extra time that I've gotten back to our community and to our schools in service of kids like my son. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, everybody, for those comments. Let's move into the questions, and again, Vicki will answer the first one, and then we'll go back around the table. So, the first question is this: What issues do you believe the district needs to address in its academic programs and offerings, and what, if any, changes would you recommend?
So, I've been looking at the curriculum broadly, and I think that it is doing a very good job along the STEAM courses. There's a breadth of opportunities, a breadth of AP courses. I think that, as I think about what the corporate world and what the college education programs are going towards, it's more of a collaborative and team-based style of approach. And I think as we think about our academic curriculum, we need to think about how do we start building that into it so that kids can learn some of these real-time skills in their day-to-day in a place that's safe and there isn't as much risk for them to learn them. I think it's important that this be a project-based activity, and it's hard to get right to the core in big classrooms. So, we have to start thinking about how do we divide out classrooms so that they can get this hands-on experience, working towards something, presenting it back to people so that they're able to demonstrate what they've learned.
I believe that we need to have more project-based learning in our classrooms, especially in the elementary school. I am a big advocate of project-based learning, be it the children do experiments. I've always talked about this, building volcanoes. You know, we started a lot of different programs in our elementary school with STEAM. A lot of people talk about STEM, but I am a big advocate of STEAM. You know, I want to start add more arts, you know, where children can actually express themselves. You know, art is not just all about drawing, it's about music. You know, we have so many different programs in a pipeline that the children, you know, can actually benefit from. Another area that I think we can do better is with girls. We need our girls to get back into science. We need our girls to do more math. We need our girls to build more confidence when it comes to getting into robotics. You know, we have majority of our boys in high school getting into robotics. What happened to the girls? You know, we need them to be able to feel enthusiastic regarding all of these kind of subjects. I'm a scientist. You know, I want to see more girl scientists. I want them to be excited about science. So, we need to find a way to actually let girls get more interested again in all of these roles, you know, to get into medical school, to do a lot of science-based projects, you know, especially the project-based learning. I'm a big advocate of that. Thank you.
Two key things I'd like to change, being in the classroom, I see it, is one that, you know, and being a math person myself, I am quite dismayed that in accelerated science and math, in ninth grade, my son said it's 80% boys and 20% girls, and it starts from the middle school. So, being in the classroom, even in the fifth grade, with math and with, you know, the computers, they let them choose their partner, girls choose girls and boys choose boys, and there's a difference right there, and all the boys get it, and it'll be the girls that are having problems. So, maybe from early on, matching up a boy and a girl, because they both bring different skill sets. Young boys probably play video games and more comfortable, but the girls pay attention and are much more precise, you know, when answering questions, so, and they have better verbal skills usually, so maybe the combination I would start looking at. The second thing is the mill, we made these spaces, mostly, you know, at the high school it's mostly for robotics, but I would like to see in the curriculum teamwork, group dynamics class as a mandatory semester class, that kids can work together in those rooms and work on their communication, working in a group. That we're not doing right now. And the last thing is cybersecurity, which is every company, there's a huge shortage, and, you know, and the government will help fund programs in that also for the high school.
Thank you.
I went to the Ed Camp last Saturday, so it was a great opportunity for me to learn about things that we're working on. I'm a concepts person. I really like our, what our administration is doing with the Melbourne instructional mindset. There's a concept called flipping the classroom, where education is changing from the teacher being the center of the classroom to the student being the center of the classroom. I believe we need to emphasize that more and more, because it's the best way to embrace the digital environment that we're in. And also, we need to, as I said on Sunday, we need to change to block scheduling so we could have longer class time, so that we can have a greater emphasis on individual learning. And if you look at what, what does it take to be a future-ready learner? You have to be able to work in a team, able to make decisions and solve problems, communicate verbally with people inside and outside an organization, able to plan, organize, and prioritize work, obtain, process, and analyze data information, think creatively, and I guess I would add to that, have to be able to work independently. You can't do all that in 41 minutes.
So, we have a 5,000-person district, a 5,000-student district, and I bring that up because to drive any kind of bureaucratic change across a large organization requires a tremendous amount of planning, it requires a framework. And I don't know how well it is known that the district's actually in the midst of doing that. David referenced the Future-Ready Framework. That is a program of, it's an approach that brings computers and 21st-century learning into the classrooms. It is a migration from what we call the three Cs, I mean, the three Rs of learning, you know, reading, writing, and arithmetic, to what we call the four Cs, which are the skills that the 21st-century learner is going to need. It's the things that our employers are asking us for now, so things like collaboration, communication, things like critical thinking, and collaboration, communication, critical thinking, and creativity. The district has begun that process, but the district has not done a third job of bringing parents into the conversation. That's one of the things that I like to try to do. So, thanks.
Okay. Would anybody like to follow up on these comments? Anyone?
I just went over. David and I both went to the Ed Camp on Saturday, and it was actually fascinating to listen to, for anybody doesn't know, the Ed Camp was a, an activity that we ran here at the Melbourne Innovative Lab, but it, we brought people in from different districts. And it was really fascinating to listen to people from other school systems, you know, administrators from other school systems pay homage to what we're doing here. And I, I don't think I realized the extent to which our district's already a leader in this area of, you know, bringing this different way of thinking into the classroom. And a lot of times, we think it's about bringing laptops in. It's so much more than that. It really goes to instruction. So, just the good news is that we're, we're already, I would say, about three-quarters of the way there, and we just need to bring the parents into the conversation and make sure that we are able to articulate in such a way that it's tangible for our kids and our parents.
Thank you, Carolyn. I think project-based learning is great. The problem is you can't do it in 41 minutes, and we need to increase the class times, not only in the high school, but also in the middle school. Thank you.
I understand we're in the midst. We've switched from Singapore math to math-in-focus, and, you know, that is a different way of teaching, just not memorizing facts in math, but it's more using a critical thinking. And I think that's where maybe we need to work a little harder on how we teach the girls that, because there seems to be a really big drop-off, and I've had a really hard time trying to recruit, recruit girls out of school to go on the trading floor. And I don't, and we're graduating medical school more than men, 52%. We graduate in college much higher percents than men, but yet, in these fields, we're still really behind. And if anyone, if any place can do it, it's Melbourne. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. I have a follow-up question that was not on the card here. So, when we ask these questions about the school district, the replies very often are some version of what we should do more of: more collaborative time, a specific recommendation to add on mandatory class for teamwork. And so, every time I hear that, it makes me think, you know, sometimes people say, well, there's a budgetary issue. But on some of these things, it's not a money issue, it's a space-time continuum issue. There are only so many minutes in the day. And in Harry Potter, maybe they figured out a way to go back and forth, but for the rest of us in the real world, there's no way to do that. So, my question for you, all of you who want us to do more of something, anything, what is it you're prepared to cut and do less of to make the time to do more of these things you want to do more of?
Are you talking financially, or are you just...
No, no.
But you, you make it elect, we have electives in high school. You do have elective classes.
Right. But if it's a mandatory class, if every single, if you added a mandatory elective for every single kid, the ripple effect of that is, is that a some number, and probably a substantial number of electives, are now not going to have enough kids taking them because they don't have another spot in their schedule, and they're going to have to be eliminated. Something, when you add, something has to go. I just want to see if you have any, it's an unusual question, I know, but you sort of set me up for it. Go ahead.
So, I'm on the Board of Citizen Schools, which is a charity and a nonprofit that extends the learning day for students in disadvantaged areas like Newark and Harlem. And what's really interesting is they don't really get that much time. They get about 45 minutes extra a day of teachable time at the end of the day. And what they've done is they've made it very multidisciplinary, so that kids are learning a whole bunch of things. They're learning about math and finance and collaboration in that 45 minutes together, but it's all applied. And so, I don't think that necessarily means we have to say, let's do less math, but let's rethink about the way in which we're teaching the math and make it applied to a science project or a finance project, or, and make it a collaborative effort. So, that's how I think we can do it. I've seen that model work, and I do think it's very, very powerful. And in terms of communication skills, build that right into it. So, these students, and they are very young, they, they come to us at grade six, they come back, they come back into the workplace and show us, adults, what it is that they came up with, whether it's a business proposal, a marketing plan, whatever it may be, but they do a phenomenal job with it.
In addition to that, indoor...
No, no, it's all right.
In addition to that, indoor, they also have Saturday class, which I don't think any of us is ready for that. So, I don't think I'll cut anything. I think, you know, bringing things together, things that actually work together in the timeframe that we have and that we've allocated will be fantastic, if there's a way that we can do it. But cutting anything that we have right now, I don't think would be a great idea, because we, I mean, that's what makes our school system fantastic, you know? It is, it is what it is, and we just have to be able to, you know, yeah, incorporate, you know, everything that we have. But I, I'm not, I'm not a big advocate of extending time, because if you extend the time, then what time are we, you know, you have to rearrange the whole thing. You have to rearrange the whole schedule. So, I'm not a big proponent of that.
Pass this by, we all answered?
Yeah, just come here. Yeah.
Danielle, one more?
Thank you.
I'm ready.
You know, I understand your question in an absolute sense where you have, you know, you put one in, you have to take one out, but, but I agree with Vicki in that you can, you can teach across multiple planes, and we're in the digital world where, I remember when I got my BlackBerry, how I could mobilize, you know, 50 people where I couldn't do it before. So, the, so we just have, there's so many opportunities with technology to be more efficient in the way we teach, that I'm not sure, while I respect your question, I'm not sure that it's necessarily like that, where you have to necessarily, you get addition by subtraction. I think you could have addition, one plus one equals three. I think that's the way that we all are trying to go.
And I'm going to agree with David. I'm going to say I kind of reject your question with all, with all due respect. And I don't think it's necessary to, to do one for the other. I think one misconception that we have is that this isn't happening already in the classrooms. I think if you've spent any time inside the schools, as I have, and you've, particularly in the high school, you would know and you would have a sense for the fact that a lot of this blended instruction is already happening. Our kids are working collaboratively. Our kids are being asked to work with creativity. They are being asked to do presentations. They are being asked to incorporate citizenship into their learning lessons. They are being asked to think about culture enrichment, their place in the world. All of the things that we would want for our kids are already there. What I think is really lacking, and I don't think I articulated very well before, and I apologize, I'm a little nervous, but I think what is really lacking is bringing our parents into the conversation. I think so many times, what's going on in the district is going on in the classroom. The kids are savvy, they know what they're doing, and we parents are kind of operating with the assumption that the old model is still at play, and that our kids are still doing worksheets or doing, you know, multiple choice tests, and that's not at all how they're being assessed, it's not at all how they're working. And if you go, if you're going into science, you're going to get, you know, cross-cutting concepts, you're going to talk about science and patterns and scales, you're going to talk about art in science, you're going to talk about math and real-world application that's already happening. So, I politely rejected the question down.
Your politeness is accepted. I won't, I won't belabor this because it's time to move on, but I'll give you an example. Back several years ago, when everybody wanted to add robotics to the middle school curriculum, something actually had to give, and when you added it into the cycle class, there were already four, there were four, if there's 40 weeks in the school year, there were four pieces of the cycle class. When you wanted to add robotics, something had to give. So, you had a choice of either eliminating one of the things or cutting everything from 10 weeks to eight weeks, and that's what they did. The reality is, this was no happy-talk hypothetical thing, there literally weren't the minutes in the day, and so, the other four things got cut from 10 weeks to eight weeks. I told Jim Chrystie all the time, I wanted to put out a note to all the parents, and the headline was going to be "Art and Music Cut 20% in the Middle School." And he begged me not to do that, but that's what happened, you know? I just want to make that point. It's easy to talk about adding, just like running a budget, when you want to do something new, sometimes something has to be taken out. But anyway, let's move on. Next question, which I know is a very topical one in the community, and David, you'll go first this time. There's been a lot of discussion in our community regarding the health and wellness of our students. What do you see as the Board's role in dealing with student wellness?
I believe that student wellness is the most important issue facing us, that and conduct. In 2017, President Jaffe hosted a wellness forum, and there were specific recommendations made relating... made related to homework, scheduling, and the way feedback should be given between parents, I'm sorry, between teachers and students. And I believe that those recommendations should be enacted, okay? And also regarding wellness, I believe that we need to make our students feel safe. So I looked at the performance reports, and we had 33 incidents, including HIV. And those, that needs to be addressed and worked on. And also, I believe that we should have a student representative on our Board of Ed, more than just an alliance committees, so that kids feel more involved in the process. I mean, you look around this room, you don't see a lot of students here, and I think that's very unfortunate, and that we need to improve on that as a community.
Carolyn.
So the topic of stress is literally the number-one thing I hear when I go out and I talk to parent groups. Not only do I hear it, but the research would also shows that we have a systemic problem in this country with student stress. There's a lot of reasons for it. But if you take a step back and you think about what causes a person to get stressed, it usually is a combination of factors that starts with feeling isolated, feeling like their work has no purpose, feeling an imbalance between the amount of work and a lack of joy. And these are things that I think the board can actually affect in setting the culture and setting the priorities of the district. So if you look at our budget right now, if you look at our budget and you include the debt service and everything, our total budget, our total expenditures are roughly around $97 million. You look at that, and then you compare to it the guidance budget, 1.5 million, it's a very small percentage of what we're spending, meaning that we talk the talk about stress and wellness, but we're not really prioritizing it. Now, the district just started doing work in that area. We brought in a program called Challenge Success, which directly talks about all the root causes, why our kids are feeling stressed. It starts with a questionnaire, which we'll be sending out to kids, and then from there, they will do some recommendations. But I think that the board's role in that is going to be to hold the district accountable, that we're looking at the causes of it, and that we're making sure that we're getting enough information out there to our kids and to the parent communities about the work they're doing and why they're spending that time and doing enough to build community so that there is a sense of joy in their daily lives, which is missing right now. So I think that, I agree with Carolyn, that I think that stress is multifaceted. If you look at what happens to any individual that's operating within a system that has, that places demands on it, the demands are usually twofold. It's either quantitative overload or qualitative overload. And I do think that from my talking to students and talking to parents, there is this element of quantitative overload. Sometimes there's a lot more work than maybe what is required or necessary. And I think that our role as a board is to make sure that things are being done in the spirit of the policies and the philosophy in which we want things undertaken. And I think we can hold people accountable for practices that are not consistent. Secondly, I do think the role of guidance counselors and trained professionals in assisting our students and their parents in managing stress is very critical. And I do think we have to allocate the budget appropriately so that those resources are diverted that way.
Aye.
I believe that the entire board and faculty need to be in continuous training when it comes to dealing with student stress. And I can say that the board is, we are, this is what's on everybody's mind. And the board is actually doing a lot of training right now. We just need to get the teachers and everybody on board to do more of this training more often. You know, stress, we are all stressed, we live in a stressful environment. And I always talk about a whole child. You know, we are Millburn. That's how, you know, that's what our culture, our culture is not stressed, don't get me wrong, but the way the system is built, you know, it can be very stressful. But then we just have to, you know, teach our children also how to, you know, not only persevere, but to be able to handle, you know, all the things that's happening around them. You know, we need them to be global thinkers, we need them to be able to face the world. You know, the world is not easy out there, and they will face stress. We just have to find a way to incorporate and help them, you know, get, I don't want to dumb down the system. You know, we are Millburn, this is what we do, this is why everybody's here, you know, to take the courses, to prepare our children for the future, prepare them for the best universities out there. So I don't think we should, you know, when we talk about stress, there's a strategy, there's a way. I've actually participated in a lot of training, suicide prevention and things like that. There's so many different trainings out there that we need to actually bring our teachers on board. And we also need to help parents, you know, in dealing with children's stress. It's not only a board member. Thank you.
Okay, Danielle.
This is something very near and dear to me, and one of my things, platforms running for, is in the middle school, you have one guidance counselor for 400 kids. How is that going to work? And the same comment is, unless you have an IEP or you have the top 10% of the class, the middle, there are people that never talked to the guidance counselor all three years. And how can he? He's putting out fires. So we already started a program where he, this year, and they're hoping to do this with every guidance counselor, they have Mr. Peace at the middle school, has a graduate student getting their masters in guidance and working in our guidance department. So we're able to bring in people, see, you know, a lot less money, and see how they work out, and we can make hirings if we like it from there, so they know they need to add. The second thing, we already have ACE in place for the freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and it's two months too late. So basically, it's having a mentor. But growing up, I had a senior sister, big brother, they got in contact with us the first week of school when they're freaking out. So that's something that we can adjust pretty quickly, because we have something in place, but it just needs to be done sooner. Because a lot of times, too, to help the guidance department, a kid might not tell their teacher or guidance or their own friends, but they'll tell like an older brother, like a senior who walked in their shoes, they may open up to them, and that'll give us another level of, to help the guidance department, maybe some kids that are struggling.
Okay, Danielle. Let's have some reply here. Yeah, David.
Danielle is absolutely right. So this is the New Jersey School Counseling Initiative, New Directions School Counseling. So they recommend 1 to 250 as a ratio. So ours is, if you look at our performance report, is about 500 to 1, okay? We have, I went to the meeting last night, I guess for the last three years, we've had anywhere from almost $2 million to $3 million in surplus. Surely, we could afford more guidance counselors.
And the thing about guidance counselors, if you think about the function of a guidance counselor, right? When we were growing up, you went to the guidance counselor when you had a problem, and you went to the guidance counselor when you wanted some assistance with college. Nowadays, our guidance counselors are spending all their time in the college admissions process. So this issue around having guidance, it's not just about having more bodies, but it's also maybe re-looking at how we're supporting our children. I think that you can alleviate a lot of stress by proactively addressing some of the things that kids are scared about. I mean, there's a lot of misinformation out there, as an example, about where kids are going to college. So you start out with kids feeling like they're at the bottom of a lobster pill, trying to get out and get on top of each other, because they have this mistaken belief that when they graduate here, they're not going to go to a good school if they don't get a certain GPA. And the reality of it is that our kids, even at the bottom, are going to some excellent schools. So some of this is planning, some of this is giving them information, some of this is having resources. And I think that the board can exert influence through the policies that it sets. I don't want anyone to get me wrong. I get stress as a part of adulthood, and it's a skill that we need to teach and kind of acclimate into. But I think that the research shows that grit and resilience are things that are built over a period of time. And we have to help nurture our kids, get that resilience. And that resilience isn't just going to come from making them feel like they're in the lobster pot. I think we have to help them transition and slowly understand how that's going to happen. And I think that happens by building resources within the classrooms, building resources within the teachers, the administrators, and guidance counselors. So I think it's a multifaceted thing, but I think that the board is highly accountable for setting the right tone.
I know this is a really hot subject, and I'm prepared to contemplate anybody wants to comment again. Actually, let me just add one thing. Those are great comments. The second part of my question, and maybe you sort of addressed it indirectly, but I wouldn't mind hearing people address this a little bit more directly. What do you see as the board's role? You know, not the, how do we feel about student stress, but what do you think the board's role in dealing with student wellness is? Yeah, we have one minute. It's just a third round of comment, but, and you can choose to reply to it, etc., or...
Well, that's, yeah, like I said, ensuring that we do have enough guidance counselors. And if you notice, what I noticed is, in the middle school, we have the largest amount of people that pull their kids out. And I think the middle school during, when kids are going through puberty, hormones raging, and going from a small grammar school to one big middle school, a lot of kids have a tough time. And so 1 to 400 doesn't work. We just got, sometimes during study hall, when kids feel overwhelmed, they now in the guidance department have a table with computers there. We just put computers in that kids could go to if they just need to feel a little bit safe and, you know, feeling a little overwhelmed, and, you know, that's been going on. The other thing, it's already in the high school, but maybe mandatory of both, as part of the gym, one of the gym cycles, having them have at least one cycle of yoga with mindful meditation, the last 10 minutes of gym class. You know, teach our kids strategies to be able to bring themselves down. The biggest CEOs in the world practice yoga and mindful meditation. So that could be another way that we easily incorporate into the school.
Okay, thank you.
Your question is, what do we think a board role is? I believe as a board member, we need to make sure that we have a policy in place for trainings. I believe if we can train and have different workshops for parents to be able to help our children, you know, it's a collaborative effort, you know, not just, you know, if we have a policy in place, we have to implement the policy. So if a policy is in place for us to address stress, you know, know what the underlying issues are, what is causing stress to our children. For example, I attended a workshop, the NGSB workshop in Atlantic City, this entire week. And one of the classes that I took was regarding, you know, having a sensory room. You know, these are board members that did a presentation, they are from Coates Neck. You know, these are the things that I feel like we should look at how other districts are actually handling this situation and bring this. You know, I'm actually having them come in to give a presentation to our board members. And so these are so many things that I feel like as a board member, you know, we have the responsibility to our town and our students. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I think that the board is responsible for allocating the resources that are necessary to provide students, parents, administrators with that, whether it be training, guidance counselors, et cetera. Secondly, I do think that the board is accountable for holding everyone responsible, that policies are being implemented in the way that they're supposed to be, and the way in which our students are treated is in spirit of those policies. What I feel is that often, or what I'm hearing examples of are that our students are being held to harsher standards on some things that are not very important, that we as adults don't even pay those consequences for. How many times have you been 15 seconds late for something? And what has been the consequence that you've had? And think about some of the consequences we're hearing about for our children.
David.
Thank you. At the risk of being redundant, I think the board has to implement what was already recommended in 2017. Rotating block schedules, need more in-class learning focused on the kids, less homework, and novel feedback systems on performance, both ways, so that teachers are, you know, in my business, the supervisors are evaluated by the people that supervise them. Some of it's confidential, or the students can, or the employees can say. And we should do the same thing. We should get input from the students on the teacher's performance and find new ways for the teachers to get feedback on the student's performance besides grading homework.
Thank you.
I'd like to answer the question, if it's okay. So the role of the board is actually very tightly defined. All of us here went to a one-day training, and they articulated exactly what the board is there to do. I'm going to read it to you. Role of the board: policy and financial oversight, educational planning, interpretation of community needs, and then the overseeing of the superintendent's responsibilities. I think informally, the other thing that you can add to that is, the role sets the culture for the district, that prioritization of policies. So to answer your question, I think, you know, and what the role can really do is work with Christine Burton, our superintendent, to help her in a process, she's already started, really, to implement some change and to do, and change management all the way through the organization relative to stress. I should also say that when you look at, if you look at the district as a whole, there's some specific things that people are asking for, less homework, differentiation of the way that we're applying AP. So there's some specific things that we can advocate. Okay, there's zero.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Okay, I think we've explored that pretty fully, and thank you for those thoughtful answers. I think we all know that this is a subject that's really, really important for our kids, right? Let's do one more question, and then we'll go to a break, okay? And the question is, and Carolyn, you'll be first this time. What do you think needs to be done in Millburn schools to convey a supportive environment for all cultures, ethnicities, and sexual orientations?
Well, this one really hits home, because one of the things that I didn't mention is that I am Venezuelan, and I was born in the US, and I'm Venezuelan, too, when I was 10 years old. We are very lucky in this community that we've got so much diversity. It really reflects the world that our children are moving into, a world that is increasingly global, a world that is going to be increasingly borderless. I think that the things that I would advocate to drive a sense of community are also common-sense things that we need to implement relative to just building a sense of community within the town. An observation, I don't feel like we do enough activities at the high school or middle school level to bring kids together, to bring families in. I think we do a good job of some educational efforts to give some sensitivity around different cultures, but I don't think that we create enough opportunities, social opportunities, for kids to come together, get to know each other. I know from my kids, the ability to participate in groups and after-school activities has been how they have made friends with kids who they normally would not come across. Relative to the LGBTQ thing, there was a great presentation yesterday at the Board of Ed meeting about the Alliance at the high school. I can tell you from personal experience that we have a very open and tolerant community, and that our kids are, feel very well-supported to be who they are, no matter what, whether it's a gender non-binary thing, or if it's a sexual orientation thing. We have a really nice culture at the high school that's supportive of that.
Thank you.
So for... Sorry, apparently using the mic is not one of my strengths. So for five out of the 10 years that I was at Alliance Bernstein, I was the head of diversity and inclusion. And so while I'd like to say I have a great answer for you, unfortunately, it's a really tough thing to do. Because one of the things that when you are from a diverse background, and it doesn't matter what that diverse background is, it can be socioeconomic status, it can be gender identity, it can be race, religion, whatever it may be, one of the important things you need is role models. And I do think that there's a pipeline issue when we look at the teachers and the administrators in the school systems. Men are underrepresented in the elementary school, and I can tell you that especially as you look at kindergarten and grade one, where it's really, really important for little boys to have positive male role models. And as we look higher into the more senior grades and just broadly, we don't see as many people of different backgrounds in those positions. I think that's a critical thing we have to adjust. I don't think, I'm not quite clear how we can do that in the confines of the board, except for making sure we're casting a wide net, probably looking outside the region for un-typical teachers. I think also, I still have a second. I'm passionate about this. I think also...
I think also there are steps that are already being taken. I was really reassured when I saw that the high school students are reading The Namesake. And my husband and I read that book probably about 15 years ago when it first came out. And there was never a book that I read as a child that represented us. And I think thinking diligently about how we represent the kids in the curriculum is key.
Thank you.
For those of you who does not already know, my background is Nigerian. So I, I think we are, we are a very diverse community. We really are. And we are very tolerant of each other. Can we do better in that area? Yes. But I agree with Caroline that sometimes it can be very difficult to do. But charity, I hear, you know, begins at home. I think parents, you know, I, board members, as a board member, we'll keep a policy in place to have trainings and different activities for their children to do. But, you know, as our children are growing, we also as parents, I will, you know, I will start by advocating for parents to do, you know, more talking at home, you know, you know, children be more tolerant of each other. And, you know, as a community, I think we're doing, we're doing a great job, you know, with that, being tolerant of one another. I think you are scared of what you don't know, right? And if you know more and try to learn more about one another, you know, things that give foster more diversity, you know, socioeconomic background and things like that. You know, there's a lot that we still have to do in this area, but we're, we're on the right track. Thank you.
I would agree with, with her. I'm an Italian who grew up in a Jewish neighborhood in Brooklyn and married a Cuban from Kentucky. His parents, he was probably the only Cuban that, yeah, there. His parents immigrated from Cuba. And I'm sure I had the only Roberto and Antonio in, in school. But when one focuses on similarities and not differences, I see how easily we can be one with everyone else, Indian, Chinese, Jewish, Persian, Italian, Cuban, the importance of family and traditions, family meals, respect the importance of the grandparents, having a good education. My children, their best friends, one has, is Chinese best friend, one is Indian. And why I'm so optimistic is this Gen Z generation, and this book Upside explains that this is the most racially diverse generation, least prejudiced generation. And that is a very good thing. And I think Milburn symbolizes that without diversity. And that makes me very, very excited to be for these kids who are growing up like this.
Thank you. So I built a diverse company, Kobo Products, and basically it was through policies of active recruitment and engagement. So I support what our assistant superintendent, he made a presentation in March on global awareness and cultural diversity. And they are participating in job fairs to try to get teachers from more diverse backgrounds. I think that's very important. I also, in preparing, in 2016, we participated, our high school, in a student government summit with other schools. Milburn High is basically almost 60% white, 30% Asian, I mean, there's some other minorities. I would recommend that we have other summits at schools that have a different racial mix and bring the kids together so that they're engaged. I also think there are things around here, for example, Pingree School has something, Institute for Teaching Diversity and Social Justice there, nearby. We missed the first session, but they have another one November 1st. And they deal with very difficult issues like race, privilege, very excellent, appears to be an excellent program.
Great, thank you. Follow-up?
Just a comment. Sometimes I think it's we, the grownups, who could use some assistance in this area. So last night, the GSA came to, they gave this delightful presentation. And, and then they got offstage and I heard somebody say, "Thank you, girls." And what struck me about that was that I happened to know these kids and I know that one of them identifies as a non-binary and doesn't go by a girl. So I'm sure that would have surprised the, the people behind the audience. I've had my own kids educate me about terminology, about different ways of looking at things. And why it matters, and I know sometimes we, we kind of roll our eyes, it's not what we grew up with, but why it matters is because everyone wants to be seen, right? Everyone wants to be acknowledged for who they are and how they feel on the inside. And that goes to cultural differences, it goes to gender, sexual orientation, all that kind of thing. So just somehow or other, we have to bring the parent community into that, into that conversation so that we can do better as well.
So I, I agree with Caroline. I, I think, you know, all of you touched on it in your comments at some point about, you know, there's 20% girls in AP math and you're seeing this huge drop off of gender, of women and girls in, in the higher grades in robotics and science. There's a problem. It's called unconscious bias, and we have to help our teachers and the administrators address it. And it's a training like David is suggesting, it's, it's getting them in the room, talking about it, but it exists across every single dimension of diversity. I spent the day today with the Black Leadership Forum at Prudential and you should hear them talk. They feel like they're getting a fair shot, kind of, but behind closed doors, they don't necessarily feel that way. And it's not what anybody does systematically, it's about the small little micro inequities that happen.
Thank you. David?
Yeah, I agree with what Vicky said. You know, there's a, there's a principle in, in New Jersey, we haven't really talked about it, but equity in education. So basically, it's how do you make sure that all kids are getting the same opportunity regardless of their background? And I believe that we have to file, I'm not 100% sure, but I believe we have to file something with either the state or the county related to it. Each year, I tried to look up what we did, but, but I'm not sure, but it's, but it's really a very interesting topic, equity in education. How do you make sure everyone gets the same opportunity?
Danielle, right?
Just like parents now, my ninth grader, I'm very happy to say, like he, I was blown away by the number of clubs and teams that offer eggs for everyone that you can choose from. And he was excited about it. And I could tell, you know, from growing up with the system, he was like, "You know what, Mom? As an elective, I want to, I want to do women's studies." I said, "You do? Hmm. Why?" "Well, I think I need to understand where women are coming from, you know, so I could be, you know, a better boyfriend, her husband." And he's like, "I'd like to take a class, back a class in that." I'm like, "Absolutely." And they offer a class in that. So I'm pretty happy with that and the number of clubs they have.
There you go. Okay, great. Thank you for those thoughtful answers. Let's take a break. And I say five minutes, and by five minutes, I mean no more than seven minutes. Okie doke. Welcome back. This question, Danielle will be the first one to take your crack at it. And the question is this, what experience do you have with complicated budgets? And when you're given the proposed budget for the district, what will be your process to determine if it is, if it is a good budget for the system?
Not being on the board yet, there's certain things on the board. Once you're on the board, you find out. But from some of my questions that got answered, when, once you get, I, is publicly put out, took a look at the expense side of the balance sheet, and one of my questions were, we pay an exorbitant amount in bank fees, why do we have three different banks instead of, you know, going to one bank and saying, if we give you all business, who can give us the best terms in terms of expenses? I was told it's not a New Jersey mandate that you have to have three, but it's a hassle to get it to, for one, you know, to down to one, you have to get some approvals. Not that it can't be done, but if it could save you $30,000 a year in fees over period, over X amount of years, that's real money. So that's one of the things I would do right away. And I've done that with people before with small businesses in getting reduced fees by using just one bank. The other thing is some of our decisions, whether to lease or to buy, September 24th, we agreed to go into a five-year lease on three copy machines for $17.50 a month. That's $105,000. To buy those machines, if we were to buy it outright, was $50,000 with a five-year warranty. That's like another teacher's salary. So these are the things I look at and want to be able to see more, because my background is finance, I think I could find a lot of savings on that side.
Okay, thank you. David?
Thanks. Okay, so, so my first job out of college, I was a CPA for Cooper's and Library, and I was an auditor. So I have a lot of expertise in financial statement accounting, so I don't expect that reviewing our budget will be something that will be overly challenging for me. Also, the size of my company, the sales are equal in size to the budget. We have a subsidiary, direct subsidiary in Brazil, in France, and a joint venture in Japan, so I have a lot of experience dealing with financial statements and analysis. And basically, it comes down to learning what's in each of the accounts. And, you know, in terms of who we do business with, I think we have to work with the administration and understand why they have relationships with different people and, you know, value is a complex thing. In my business, I stayed with, I've stayed with Verizon for 30 years. I've stayed with the same property and casualty insurance company for, for the same amount of time. I find it's very important to have stability in relationships. This way, you get things done that you need to get done. So it's not always how much, you know, how, how much you can, you know, it's not always how much you can squeeze out of somebody, it's basically value in the supplier relationship, you know, from my perspective. So I'm really excited about the opportunity to work with the administration.
So my husband and I are business owners. And the one thing I've kind of realized about myself as we've been looking at, at our business, one is that I tend to approach things with a creative brain and I bring a lot of common sense to the process. The other, though, is that I'm pretty fiscally conservative. So as I've, I've been looking at our, at our budget, I think one of the things that we haven't spent a lot of time talking about is the debt that we incurred because of the referendum last year. So we, I don't know how many people know this, but we essentially doubled the debt. And when I talked to the various board members about the implications to that and what that meant to us as citizens, the thing that I, I kind of started realizing was that the financial picture for the district with so much of the, of the budget being fixed is really going to require some creative oversight. I mean, it's not just going to be a matter of trying to affect a small percentage that we know we can actually move, it's also going to be looking at how we manage the debt, looking at things like what kind of grants we're applying to. For example, our security head told me about a creative thing that he did to get a half a million dollar grant by labeling it under technology. So it's going to require, I think, some degree of sophisticated creativity and, but then also just some sense of responsibility. Our taxes are really high, and even though they're capped, there's always a temptation to, to try to, to push it to the allowable overage. And I think we need to try to do more with less.
So I've had two roles in which I've had responsibility for budgets and a number of roles where I've been responsible for very significant payroll and contract negotiations. One, which I'm particularly proud of is at Alliance Bernstein, I managed our venture capital money and managed all of our venture deals, which meant that I had to go in and look at startups and look at their budgets and start saying, which of these companies are going to be financially viable in six months, 12 months, a year, five years, whatever may be the investment horizon. And so I think I can bring that discipline here. And I think what's critical to that discipline is saying, let's take a step back and what are our strategic priorities? What is it that really matters to us for 2019, 2020? And making sure that we're allocating the budget based on what those priorities are and what those goals are. And I think from there, you have to ask, if these are our priorities and goals, who really knows what it's going to take to execute them from a financial perspective? And speaking with whether it's the head of safety or the head of HR for the payroll to understand how do we need to allocate those resources? What are you going to need? What's the best that you can do in terms of the trade-offs we need to make versus time, value, and cost?
I can say as a current board member, I've participated in the referendum, I've participated in, in, you know, looking at our budgets. But we have experts in place that help us in this way. We have the, the board lawyer that look at all of our budgets and things that we have actually allocated all of our money to. So looking at the budget, you know, this last couple of months and, you know, participating in our discussion, there are some fixed things, fixed items in our budget. It can be very difficult and very cumbersome to understand, but, you know, there are courses and classes and things like that to help us along the way. And we have a lot of representatives from the NGASPA to also help us along the way in looking at our budget. All of us want to be fiscally responsible, there's a lot of things that we all plan to do, but there are some things that, you know, you just, it's, it's almost like moving, moving in a little. You know, we can move the money around, we have a fixed amount that we are allocated that we can play with. You know, and I like Danielle's spirit, trying to save costs, you know, I'm on the same mindset as you, but, you know, I've heard that you brought up the printer leasing a couple of times. And, you know, I have actually inquired with other board members to try to see why are we actually doing this? Why are we not buying? And the response that I actually got is that it's actually better for us to actually lease the big printers. And the reason why is because it's not only just, you know, leasing the printer, you have, you know, we, we are, they're also offering us ink, you know, there's a warranty, there's like maintenance issues. If we buy them, they are extremely expensive and they can break down easily. So some of the smaller printers, we own in town, but the bigger ones, it's actually better for us to lease than for us to, than for us to, than for us to actually buy. And then to actually own this printer after the lease is up, it, it costs us a dollar to do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, let's have a follow-up, David?
I was saying, the, when I called inquire about the cost of it, it was a five-year warranty. So if it broke down or anything, they, they would be able to, they would fix it, they had warranties on it. And then, and I thought you did it for five years, because after five years, you know, things become obsolete. So I, I see on there that you sell some old equipment, technology stuff back, right? I see some old computers, you know, and the residual value is not zero, it's like 5,000. There's still a big difference between 50,000 and 105,000. And that's with the five-year warranty on, on the equipment. And, I mean, you didn't look into, and, and it is a shame that the IRA has rules on your IRA and 401K, but they didn't do it for the 403B. But for all those teachers, the insurance companies can charge 3.5% in fees versus 1% for people with IRs and 401Ks. And 3.5% is a lot of money for people's retirement.
I'm usually loathe to chime in, but I would just point out in this case that the school board have nothing to do with the teachers' 403B or any control over it, just so you know that, the union controls that. Anyway, go ahead, Dan.
Thank you. So my background was financial reporting. I'm an expert. I have the same, at least the same amount of experience as, not necessarily in government accounting, but in generally accepted accounting principles as the firm that does the school systems books. And so one of the things that I noticed from going to the board meetings is that the financial reporting, I believe at the meetings, could be enhanced. I believe, you know, during the meeting, you, you, we learned we have a $3 million surplus. I can remember, you know, last year that it was 1.8. I can remember, you know, when I looked at board meeting notes, when we didn't have enough money for security. So we should know where we are month to month in terms of our cash sources and uses. And if I'm elected, I will make sure that that happens.
I think one of the hardest things for me to have accepted in the last 10 years from going on gazillion board meetings in the last 10 years from going on gazillion board meetings and working with you and just being well tuned in is there's a whole different world. Regulations, rules, formats, and things that you have to adhere to when you're dealing with public funding, and particularly when you're dealing with school funding. There are federal grants that come in. There are different kinds of monies that you can apply for. There are revenue streams that come in for special ed or for specific, you know, categorical aid. The thing that I would ask for you to look for in us when we're making this election is to find somebody who's going to have the requisite skill set to go in and really learn this. Because whatever we bring to the table from our, you know, like I have looked at our business balance sheets, and then I look at this, and it's apples and oranges. You really need to try to, have to understand the nuances of managing a school fund.
Vicki, you good? Okay, one last question, and then we'll go to final statements. Do you, and I believe that it is, I am going to turn it over first. Do you think the board and administration are effective communicators of information to parents and students? If not, what would you want to change to improve the situation?
So I, sorry. So I think that we can improve in this area. And if I'm re-elected, what I plan to actually try to implement and put in place is I think we need to have, add our committee that can actually help us in, because there's so many things that as a board member, you cannot say. For example, when we're having our meeting and we're having the public session, you know, someone is very irritated about our situation and they're talking to the board member and we're just sitting there, just looking because we cannot, you know, comment or have a dialogue. So I feel like if we put an add-on committee in place, they can help us with some of the communication that I feel like, and the transparency. Because I hear that a lot even while running last year, is that we're not transparent enough and we're not letting the public know what's going on. And I feel like we can also, you know, do like a mail blast to the public of things that we can actually have, that the public needs to know. So during the workshop that I attended in Atlantic City this past week, I came across, they have different, you know, workshops and different, you know, people with their businesses. I came across this business called BoardDoc. And I've brought that back into the district to say, we need to actually invest in that. It's like $1,500 a year. That's another thing that I think we can do to be able to let the public see what the public can see and what the board can see. There's going to be policy there. There's going to be different types of information. Instead of having to print all of our agendas, you can easily go to their website and get your agenda and things like that. So I think we do need to improve in our communication with the public. Thank you.
Danielle.
I think everyone knows we can do a better job communicating with the public. It's one of the things that a lot of residents have had complaints about. If elected, I will always seek feedback from the community and make sure the board represents all the residents and make sure, on what we can, communicate in a timely manner. And like she said, there's many things that the board cannot say, but at least validate people and saying, we did get, you know, your issue that you brought up, answering them back and saying, we can't discuss this at this time, but we promise you, as soon as we have something, we'll get back to you. So just maybe validating people instead of not say, not responding at all and then two months later them getting something, I think would just make people feel that you actually do care what they're saying and, you know, you're respecting them and saying, this is something. Or if we can get back to them, give them something in a more timely fashion.
Thank you, David.
The answer is no. I went to the board meeting last night. Our president did a wonderful job. But, but she was quoted as saying in January of 2018, we should ban the word transparency from the meetings. So we need to communicate in a very different way going forward. And also, there's a lack of transparency when it comes to their thought process, which gives a lot of stress to the parents and the students. And that mentality has to change in the next administration. And as I said before, in terms of financial reporting, we also need to improve so that people have a sense that the board is fiscally on top of things so that when people, you know, unfortunately, we are in a, we live in a dangerous world. So when parents come to the meetings and they want to know can we invest in more safety? We don't say, oh, we don't have any money. And then you find out at the end of the year, you have a surplus of like $2 million bucks. So we need to do better. And I really suggest that whoever's there, they have more training in terms of what they can say and what they can't, so they understand.
Carolyn.
I would say from an organizational perspective, our biggest need right now is for better communication. We have two driving things that we need to look at. First and foremost, we're in the midst of a transformation in our district. We're changing the way we teach our kids. We're teaching, we're changing the way we interact with our kids. We're bringing in a bunch of new initiatives. And we don't do a good enough job of bringing our parents into that conversation. I'm not even sure we do a good enough job of bringing our kids into that conversation. I think our teachers understand how things are changing, but that's basically as far as the communication flow goes. Relative to the board, the board's communication challenges are but a microcosm, I think, of a much bigger need that we all acknowledge is an issue. I should just tell you guys that I got drafted into running for the Board of Ed because I have a background in communications and because I've been working with the school system for a long time in this area. I have way too many thoughts about how to articulate it, that I could articulate in 90 seconds. But I will say to you that just on Saturday, I was talking to Dr. Burton at great length about some of the things that we need to do to not just streamline our messaging, but then figure out how to deliver it across the entire ecosystem. Because we are in fact a huge ecosystem that closes the library. But I still got 90 seconds, right? Just make sure. So look, every organization struggles with communication. It's the reality of it. You can never over-communicate. I think what we have to do is step back and say, what are the three or four areas that people want communication for? They want it because they, we want to communicate because we need to exchange information. We want to communicate because we want to make sure that there is an opportunity to get input and solicit different ideas. And we need to acknowledge and empathize with people. And I think that at different times and on different topics, there's an opportunity to do each of those. Maybe not in exactly one forum, in lots of different forums. Maybe it's the committee, the ad hoc committee. Maybe it's through a communication campaign. Maybe it's through a tool. But I think we have to look at a very multifaceted communication strategy so that we can do more in terms of bringing transparency and communication and information to parents, teachers, and students. The other thing is, is that, and this may be a little unpopular, but transparency does not mean 100% disclosure. There are going to be topics that as board members, we're not going to be able to communicate about. But that doesn't mean we can't share something to let people know, to let the constituents know that we're thinking about it, we're debating about it, we're working on it.
Follow.
I just want to agree with Vicki, though, about the demonstration. I think one of the things that frustrates me about board meetings, you go to a board meeting, you come in, say you're, you have an issue, right? You've never gone to a board meeting before. You come in, you sit down, and you wait. And then you finally get your moment. You get up on the, you know, and you come up with your passionate subject. Like you've gotten the courage to come in, and you tell everyone, and you bear your soul because it didn't go right for your child. And then the board looks at you like this. That's not right. I mean, from a humanity perspective, it isn't right. So my recommendation for that would be, first and foremost, fill the rules out. Second, you know, you got, hi, come on in, welcome. Before we start, I would like to reiterate, these are our rules, this is how we operate. Please don't be offended if we don't answer your questions. Here's how we'll get back to you. That's just a basic, just a basic courtesy. But outside of that, I think that we need to take the board meetings out on the road like they used to do. We used to have board meetings at various schools. I think we need more sit-downs. You know, certainly, there's rules with board meetings, but there are no rules of communication when you go out and you do a town hall. We need more town halls. We need to go out more into the community. And I think we need to push information out as opposed to just be always in reactive mode.
David.
I agree 100% with what Carolyn just said.
Yeah, I agree. And I already told them, it's the timeliness. I mean, just acknowledge people in some way. And, you know, I think they go far, you know, and they get, I understand they get emails from town residents all the time and, you know, they can't come back and answer every single person's email. But, you know, we need to do a better job of just, you know, letting people know, we're working on it. And as soon as we have something, we'll get back to them instead of silence.
Fine.
I would like to say something about, I believe it was David who talked about the money that we have left over in the district. We just don't have money left over floating around with nothing to do with it. The money that we have left over, if you look at the audit report online, is for things that we probably used to have and we no longer have, and we'll bring that money back into the district. And for three years consistently, we have had the same amount of money. This is, this is something that other districts do. You need that cushion to be able to function as a district. So when we're talking about, we have 1.8 million left over. There's a reason, and those, that 1.8 million can be accounted for. It's not just sitting there where we need guidance counselor and we're not, you know, putting things in place. Thank you.
Great, okay. You're in the home stretch. Thank you for a really great exchange. This is the end of your third forum in the last seven days. So one last shot here at any statement you want to give to the voters in support of your candidacy. Let's just start down here and go that way. Vicki.
So first of all, thank you all for being here. It's late at the end of the workday, and I know that's hard to do. So thank you. Thank you to the PTOC for hosting us and for organizing this. And thank you, Jeff, for moderating. I think I bring a lot of skills to the table, but I don't think that's all that matters. I think what I'm going to bring is somebody who's going to listen and partner with you and collaborate to get to the best possible solutions and help make the trade-offs. And sometimes the trade-offs are going to be hard, and sometimes they're not going to be the ones that everybody's going to rally around. And I get that, and I get that happens. But one thing you can know for sure is that I'm doing it with the greatest amount of empathy, putting the greatest amount of research and work behind it, and doing it with the best possible intent. And I think that matters.
I echo Vicki and thank you, everyone, for being here. And thanks to Jeff and the PTO conference. I mentioned to you guys earlier that I moved to this country when I was 10 years old. I was a consummate outsider, and as such, I've paid a lot of attention to how this culture worked and how to learn it from the outside in. I mention that because this tradition of service to the community was not something that I was brought up with. It was something that I, I learned, and it was something that I've really come to value. When you go up, you drive around town and you see all my signs, they're there. Not because I'm well-liked, although that's nice if people took my signs, but because I've actually done a yeoman's job of working collaboratively with so many different people in this town. My leadership skills, my organizational skills, my earnestness in when, and how I approach every job. I always come prepared to do my best. I put my heart and soul into everything I do. And if I say so myself, I'm pretty smart. I'm good at getting from A to B. And I think that's sort of why I've been able to get the support that I can get. My commitment to you is I'll always put your kids first. Putting your kids first means also putting their parents first and putting their grandmas and grandpas who live down the street who have to pay taxes first. I will put the entire community first. I will, I will also, I think, be a welcome addition from my communications and organizational perspective to the superintendentess that go through this transition that they're going through. Thank you so much.
I've learned so much during the last seven days in these three forums about our education system. It's really been a fantastic experience for me. I hope people have gotten a chance to know me. The things that I believe in, like safe routes to school, diversity, equity in education, I will strongly advocate for. The things that I'm not pleased about, everyone will know. That's just who I am. I hope that I've, in the last week, earned your vote. And thank you very much.
Thank you all for coming. Well, I, before I just started to run for the Board of Education, I, instead of talking the talk, I wanted to walk the walk. And I am the only person with certified substitute teaching degree, and I've been in the classrooms because I wanted to get the information firsthand. And you hear from teachers, you hear from the students. But I wanted to have another set of eyes, my eyes, to see what's going on in our school system. And I want to take something really good and make it even better. I'm a team player. I was a gymnast all the way through college. So it's always been about a team on a trading floor. Alpha female, mother of three, and I'm very vested in the town and school district with boys in crucial grades. I'm used to working in an intense environment and always go above and beyond the call of duty. That's who I am. And I truly believe that the BOV would benefit from my financial expertise, thinking outside the box, and a person who goes in and gets things, gets things done. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming tonight. Thanks to the PTOC. And it's past my children's bedtime and it's still patiently sitting there. So thank you. There are four key areas that I would like to leave you guys with tonight that's very close to my heart. Is that I would like to continue the good work that we're already doing in Advance and Steam. You know, continue to foster open-mindedness on the board and transparency with our parents. You know, 100% support for the overall health and wellness of all of our children, which I know is very dear to our heart. So as a scientist, team is, you know, near and dear to my heart, as you all know. While we have made inroads in this area, there are lessons that we can gain from our neighboring towns such as New Providence and things like that. I would like to continue, you know, what we have actually started. We are fast-growing and a diverse community. And we must embrace all of our unique family dynamics and harness the strengths in our human, cultural, economic diversity and special needs. So as a product of the public school myself, I firmly believe in our public schools. And I'm committed to ensuring that children get the best experience, you know, obtainable. I believe in Melbourne. It has shaped my life today, and our children have thrived here. The world-class education system we have here is the legacy that we can give to our children. And we should all come together to sustain and continually improve on it. So I look forward to the opportunity to continue to serve our community and our children, and hope will allow me to continue the tremendous work that I have been a part of for the last six months. I would also like to thank my constituents and my friends here because it's, you know, it's been tough, but you guys were all fantastic. And just come out and vote November 6th. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. That's my pleasure.